I don't like a lot of this.
I'm slicing my marriage.
So Jamie, you do what I did. So Grace came home, pulled back in, right? I don't eat a lot.
Yeah.
So I gave her a budget for groceries and I said, that's what you get to eat on all week. Buy what you want, fix what you want. You get to keep the rest.
Yeah.
So she's been very creative in her meals.
There you go, lots of rotten noodles.
That was kind of saying, I'm an every night.
Mac and cheese.
So, yeah.
That's smart.
I'm like very picky. I don't like bread.
She is very, very.
No bread.
Pizza.
Bread isn't interesting.
She doesn't like pizza.
Do you like french fries?
Yes. I love french fries.
She does like french fries.
Oh, my gosh.
You guys got beard chimpers.
I know, totally.
I love french fries.
She doesn't like pizza. She's kind of wild.
Oh, pizza. I asked for it in the, um, sales are pretty much for those in the parcels.
Oh, for the CSE.
Or, I'm sure as efficient as you are, so you are, I'm sure you're being impressive with your technology skills. I'm sure you've created a list that shows the parcel numbers. And purchases.
Uh, not for CSE, because I don't touch it. Let me, I'll look up your request right now. Because I don't handle CSE records.
I was trying to make it something rather than generating, I don't know, sixty, seventy, eighty pages. If you just have a, a list.
Fortunately, I have not gotten that.
Okay.
At least not with CSE. So let me log in and look at your stat.
I wear contacts with a clue. And on my license it says sneeze. I think it has to do with the, I don't know what color, but they.
How many pockets?
I don't have that many. Do you keep some of that drawer?
I want you to sit down here, Brad, and talk to you before you sit down.
Go ahead.
I had directed records affairs to Van, I believe it was. And you guys created a list of parcels that you're purchasing over there on your ripple wise order. I'm saying you parcels.
I speak with Patrick about that, because I'm not sure which.
Who was Matt Patrick?
Speak with Patrick about that. Did you already send it to Ben, you said?
It looks like Jennifer's handling it.
Pardon?
Oh, okay.
It looks like Jennifer's handling it.
Okay.
Yeah, I have it right done as of then.
Okay.
I put a note in that you asked about it.
Okay.
Mr. Osmond, I put a note in that you asked. I put a note in our system that you asked about it.
Okay, thank you.
And then I'll probably start. And work this way this time. Two hours a night.
Well, no, kind of help you. Why is this wet?
I'm sorry?
Seeing your screen reminded me that.
Well, I'm like, what are you looking at? Oh, my screen, yeah.
Got the good locations.
Yeah.
Only showing them once.
I know, right? You know, the different subs of activities.
It's hard to say.
No.
It's real nice outside.
I managed to get on the charter commission.
Did you get ready?
All right. See you coming.
Hello.
Hey kiddos.
I like your water bottle.
Ladies, registered. Put it on the second lady. I hope you covered it. Making friends, so we'll see if I actually make it on the.
Think about it.
No, she's not.
Okay, oh, that's good.
Wonder if they were here.
I was more with. You got everybody.
We're able to come forward to, we're able to build our ways from the yours, right? It's, that's what I'm showing. But it was funny, but he, it was just, uh, it was just a call.
Really? Great.
She wants to. I haven't seen him.
Pretty excited he's being discharged. Got a few.
Her parents were great, like.
Yeah.
Is he in open?
Yeah, her dad lives down south.
Oh, interesting.
I didn't think she might. You know, it's sort of like. There you go.
It is kind of true, that's funny. That is pretty.
Long time there. Got appointed there, so it's his first time running. Very. Just let you back to Ron's out.
No, they're in Farallon, yeah. I mean, that's a nice area, right? And they've got, I mean, they've got a, to me, I think I interchange Farallon with Montramp. And I think. Yeah, it's like, wait a second. But I think Farallon is more south of Montramp, right?
Most of the housing is south.
Yeah, timed.
Yeah.
We're going to talk about our twenty-five percent carryover. They currently fifteen. What's very sad is by the way, we could stop collecting taxes.
Yeah. We're not going to stop.
I get the sense that it doesn't really change much.
Good, I'm glad you said that. She put up. I know. I know, tonight she's at the Louisville meeting. Or twice a month, but, um. Five Saturday. Give it up and then and put it in the five. And then by the end of the day, we're heading down. Thought, yeah, this area, like, you don't really know. Like, you think you got it, and you're like, okay, well, the person said that, it sounds trapped. Human, like bias. And we just put it up, so we're like, I mean.
Tempting to do all of this, but doesn't have.
Wage may days in Southern track.
Like, we had dinner, and we had contracts were up.
Oh, okay, like, we didn't know. And he was like, I don't care what judge you are. Like, I don't, you know, that, and then so we go through it. And he was like pulling this way. Yeah, and I'm just like, really? I wanted to be like, it's. But like, those kind of things, you're like, seriously? Oh, I said that, I wanted to be like, I hope. Like, you know, those things happen, and it's all fine and dandy and. I'm gonna head, you cut a lot too.
So I have.
You only twenty-seven in your car.
I would take fifty.
I still got twenty-three at home I need to put up.
That's crazy. That's great.
If you recycle more than I think we ever recycle, because we have.
Tried to?
Yeah, I'd rather put.
Oh, there, yeah, yeah. We got.
He's like the.
Yeah, there's a lot.
At the moment, with just the two of us.
How far away is this family? Like, is it just one?
Oh, yeah.
Which is probably partially why it works. For everybody, it's a five-minute drive to go take your trash.
Here you go.
You're not spending twenty minutes in the car with your trash.
Well, here, seven hundred bucks off. Thirteen hundred dollars.
Oh, good. Did you find it?
Yeah.
How many was it?
Private.
It's still a lot. It is. They don't.
Well, so she's over here complaining that she didn't get an allowance this week.
It was one tour and I fucked off.
Daryl and I were talking about a resolution to dock his wages and pay.
Yeah, there he is.
Saves all the trouble that you want to do a while.
There you go. Just have maybe some either, right? It had a. They had an incinerator in there.
Wow.
Right?
Of a house.
Over a daughter. And I mean, would we solve?
Back to the point.
The Michael.
I would.
Oh, no.
Especially if it's probably a wood burning fire.
Yeah.
Your mess?
Never feel that.
Oh, no, back then, you know, people would do it where you want it, you know, burn stuff. Can you fire it? What are you talking about?
So, yeah.
Yeah, they had a, uh, on my daily.
Like, there's no EPA assessment or soil testing.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, oh, yeah. Uh, I thought I went two.
Yes. Okay. Like, really, we haven't had a disgusting. I mean, yeah. That's like a big one. And it really. Could it be?
No, that's good enough.
I now call to order the committee of the whole meeting on October second, twenty twenty-three. Your time is seven P M. Ben, please call a roll.
Member McLeeser.
Here.
Member Wire.
Here.
Member Matheny.
Here.
Member Or.
Here.
Member Volt.
Here.
Member Shireen.
Here.
Member Wire.
Here.
Seven present.
All right, start off with finance and property. Stephanie.
I think we're going to start, middle, and finish with finance and property tonight. Um, so do you, do you want to read it? Do you want to discuss it?
Sure, I've got a full presentation for you.
Right, is that how you want to start it then? So Gina, I'm going to kind of let you take these over and then, um, everything is budget-related this evening. And, uh, we kind of started this new process last year, I believe, maybe the year before. Has it been the past two years?
All three, actually.
Would you? This is, this is our third year, okay? And, um, kind of from a lot of years of sitting here until midnight, going line item by line item. And we took a broader approach and looked at it more from above. And then instead of drilling into, you know, how many rolls of paper does a department need? We're going to trust that the departments know how to do that, and then you will figure out the allocation for that. So each of us met, um, one-on-one, or a couple of us met together, um, with the whole team. And, uh, kind of went over the broad issues. And so Gina's now going to drill down on that and go over it a little deeper tonight.
Actually, Patrick is going.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Another year working together with you. Make this dream come true. So, uh, I'll go through this as quickly as I can. Uh, but it's really an opportunity to present, uh, what is the mayor's budget. And so the first couple of slides that we're going to go through, just to kind of recap our journey to this point. So, uh, you can follow on your slides or on your monitors, and I will read just a couple of short paragraphs. So we're entering North Canton's second century. North Canton's first one hundred years was a century of growth, establishment, and identity building. North Canton became a premier locality in Starr County, and the funds from the Hoover Company helped build critical infrastructure, parks, and services. Unfortunately, it did not last forever. Like many communities in the Rust Belt, the city lost its largest employer, along with related income tax and donations that supported the city's services. Uh, we, I think we did a little research recently and discovered that, you know, pretty much all the municipal buildings where they sit was on land that we donated to or provided otherwise by the Hoover Company. For a decade, North Canton focused on simply maintaining, which meant cutting costs. And many needs went unaddressed. Since twenty eighteen, North Canton has exited that period of transition and began to look forward to the city's second century as one of redevelopment, growth, and prosperity. But in order to grow and prosper, we had to take care of some items that we hadn't carried around. And we've gone through this list a few times. You can't read all the funding trends, I'm sure. So I'm just going to pick out a few, just to kind of give you the flavor of things that, that we had to deal with. Because in order to grow, you have to build on a foundation. Without a foundation, whatever you build is on. It's like you're saying, or, was that, that song?
Pillars of Sand.
Popular song, your kids probably. Uh, so what, uh, we had, uh, health insurance, um, coverage with no aggregate stop-loss limit. And I, I can't even get a fathom of the significance of that, having been in the insurance business. But the city was at huge risk. So without a aggregate stop-loss limit, that means that it was unprecedented how much the city could be on the hook for paying potential charges. One, we lacked, another one we, uh, lacked in, uh, in the current employee handbook, handbooks up to date with all the current laws. Without any means to guide our employees in what we expect from them and how they should perform on their job, and what are the rules of engagement? How could we possibly be effective? Water and sewer rates were not reviewed per the ordinance that required them to be reviewed or adjusted since twenty seventeen. We fixed that. This council fixed that. Uh, no capital improvement requests were made to the state legislature, ever. Each time we have now asked for assistance on various projects, and we are in that process right now of submitting a request to this state for their next, uh, capital budget. We had no credible I T management, uh, no threat assessment performed. And when we did get that done, we found, you know, glaring problems that we have since addressed. And many might think that it's not really that important, perhaps. But just look at Jackson Township and what they've gone through. You can see that, you know, the threats out there are very real, and they're crippling. But we've been able to deal with that thanks to this council. We had no functioning master plan. We thank the mayor and his team, uh, for helping push that initiative forward in this council and administrative staff for fine tuning that and getting us to the point where we have a master plan. And then finally, just, I think, a few weeks ago, we talked about, uh, the permit fee schedule had not been updated since twenty eleven. These are very important things as we go through our budget and trying to make sure that we right-size our budget and right-size the revenues that come with it. When through it all, we've created new legacies, legacies of positive achievement. So we improved public communications, we improved our website, we created a newsletter, started weekly council bulletins, and committed to bi-annual surveys. And we improved transparency, new financial transparency portals, new building permits search portals. We do current and historic legislation and code search integrated with the website homepage. We've improved internal functions, migrated to cloud computing. Computer automation introduced to processes, automating the workflow so that everybody knows where everybody else is at. Very important, and talk more later. Creation of policy office and key performance metrics, tracking, regular department meetings instituted. We have a dedicated H R personnel. We return staffing to appropriate levels. Continual code review and improvement. We always are bringing stuff to you with how we could tweak our code in order to be more receptive of business in parties and for our community. And we reinvigorated code enforcement. We didn't have that before. Now we do. But there's still more that is missing that we did. And so, uh, what we lack, although we do have a, we do have a city master plan of where we would like the city to be and the things that we would like to achieve, what we lack is a facilities master plan. So, um, this fall, yet this year, the administration intends to present to council a facilities master plan as a supplement to the twenty twenty-three city master plan. And in this, we will assess the city's needs for fire B M S station, police station, nine-one-one dispatch center, service garage, dogwood pool, recreation rental facilities, administrative offices. Additionally, in the first half of twenty twenty-four, the administration will present a parks development master plan to assess the city's many outdoor recreation facilities and what is their status and where we would like to go with that. So those are things that we did, those are some things we want to do, and that brings us to how we got to where we are today. So the twenty twenty-four budget proposal that you're, we're going to talk about, uh, as Stephanie has alluded to, started some time ago. And, uh, the end result, though, is that it's founded upon fiscal responsibility with three key principles. Capacity, efficiency, effectiveness. So on capacity. Ensuring the city can operationally accomplish the goals and projects budgeted. Capacity, how many projects can we undertake and not sacrifice oversight for completion of a project? And this is, you know, getting our department heads, our superintendents, to understand what is the capacity of each worker they have. They have so many hours in a calendar year that they work, so many vacations, so many sick days. You can plot all this stuff out, reduces you down to how many hours of actual work. And then with that information, times the number of bodies that are there, we're able to say to you when, you know, member Matheny calls with a constituent need and is involved with a project, can we, can we do that? Do we have the man hours to put that together? And can we do it without sacrificing any other project that we're working on and still be effective? So capacity is important. This means having the right people and the right number of people in the right place. And we didn't have that before. In the past, we simply either added payroll or reduced capacity. But we, now, under our new model, we have had to replace people in all departments because we needed to have the right people and the right number of them in the right place to do the job. With implementation of last year's budget, the North Canton government is right-sized on staffing to deliver exceptional service to residents and to accommodate reasonable future growth. Efficiency. Enhancing the city's capabilities to perform skilled functions, such as road paving, curving gutter replacement, and public communications. Across all departments, we ask continually, how can we do better at what we do? How can we break it down and rethink it to try to be more efficient with what we do? Developing partnerships to collaborate on expanded services. Recognizing that there are experts in the community that do other things that we would like to do but can't do them as well. The Y M C A, the North Canton Library. We collaborate with them because they can deliver services better than we can. Engaging with the private sector performs specialized functions that the city would struggle to effectively provide. Again, utilizing the Y M C A to manage the pool, Safe Boat to run the building department, A T Net to run the I T, North Canton Golf to run the golf course. All these are things that are not services that we could excel at if we tried to. Thirdly, effectiveness. It's about being effective with your tax dollars, more bang for the buck. Ensuring that residents receive the best value for their money, this means stretching tax dollars efficiently by prioritizing services. We save money with skilled employees. We would like to retain those skilled employees. We're ever grateful to council and the mayor for, uh, allowing us to secure city-owned paving and curbing machines. Uh, they have been in full force this year. This reduces the need to hire outside contractors for alleys and small projects. This enables us, if we get into this a little bit more, enables us to get more bang for our buck. That's very important. Open Gov, technology to digitize and streamline processes in-house and for residents to access online services than before. The more that we can automate this and make it accessible to the community to do these various things, the less people time it involves on the administrative side, on the department side. And as a result, it not only is it more efficient, but it enables us to do more things. And we're reducing red tape, updating rules such as water connection regulations to provide service to more customers. This council just proved that not too many months ago, I believe. And since then, we have, um, signed up our thirteenth new customer since the changes were made. And in all my five years before this change, you know, we had all of probably zero. Can't remember when I assigned a horn to authorize the installation of a water tap. So now, and that's a process that's automated by allowing somebody to go online, make a request. So now, and that's a process that's automated by allowing somebody to go online, make their request. Workflow goes to each department. When they sign off, it goes to the next department eventually. It makes this thing very quickly. So that's working well. Economic development, rising. So I have said recently, here at council, reported outward to the community, that North Canton must grow its commercial base. And we have many exciting ongoing developments that will bring additional revenues. Meyer Block with new business developments, spoke with builders of Bojangles. That'll be under construction in the next week or two, followed by Papa Bear in a week or two after that. Meyer is coming along well. We still have Seven Brew. We've looked at their plans. They're close to being ready to start. The road's being built. There's a lot going on in that area, as you know. Diebold-Nixdorf has completed its second expansion in three years within the Hoover District. Their new manufacturing plant represents an investment in excess of $18 million and houses approximately 400 additional employees. In 2024, we will welcome Diebold-Nixdorf's third expansion with the relocation of its corporate offices from Hudson to North Canton. This will bring in additional 75 to 100 jobs. We have two new schools, potentially three. So we know the ones on Charlotte and Claremont, both facilities did open on time, on schedule, in 2023. And this has created more jobs within the city because the school district consolidated its operations within the city limits rather than building another school outside the city limits. We're very grateful for that partnership. And they have a matter that is before the voters in the fall here coming up on the possibility of building a middle school, a brand-new middle school. So we could have another one, and how that will drive economic development in the areas surrounding that. And then finally, we introduced, as you know, a week or so ago, the shared development agreement with Jackson Township. Look forward to working that through the process and hopefully getting that in place. We have been busy of hiring potential development sites for the future growth of the city as well. 2024 budget overview, top left corner. General fund carryover balance of 25%. Now, for our television viewing audience and for those of you here today, I'm going to try to break this down into some layman's language, just throw simple terms. Because we can get kind of overboard with accounting and auditing kind of terms that maybe not everyone will understand. So, general fund carryover balance. That's, you might as well think of it in your household as your savings account. How much do you have saved up? How much do you keep in the bank from year to year? When December 31st comes at the end of the year in your household, do you still have money that you haven't spent? That's your general fund carryover. And for the city of North Canton, as it relates to various targets that we try to reach, we need to have a minimum there of 25%. 25% of our general fund we need to carry over from year to year. And this is critically important because the amount of carryover affects the interaction from two outside agencies. Auditors who like to come in and see how you're doing. And if you're not carrying 25%, you're financially at risk. Think of it at your house. You're trying to save enough money for the rainy day. When that rainy day comes, you hope to have that money there. But what if, what if it isn't there? Then what do you do? Well, then you have a problem. You have to find an alternate source of revenue. You know, in your house, maybe you put it on a credit card that carries 19% interest. There are consequences to not having enough reserves. So auditors like to see that, and then bond rating agencies also like to see this. So the city does, you know, finance things, equipment that we get, land that we buy, buildings that we add on to. And rating agencies assess a scorecard for us, our credit worthiness, would be the equivalent in your household. And if we don't have these minimum targets met, our bond rating could drop. Our bond rating drops, then our interest rate goes up. So we have put this budget together that we meet that 25% minimum threshold. But it's getting harder every year to meet that target. Upper right, water fund carryover balance presently of 40%. It needs to be 100%, not because we've made it up, but because the federal government says that that's what your target carryover balance needs to be for every district in the United States. And this all has to do with the disaster that fell in Flint, Michigan, with their situation. So now we all know what we have to get to. And to get to 100%, we're a long way from there. And over the last three years, we've maintained steadyness, but we need to make progress towards that number. Bottom left corner, there's that savings account at Piggy Bank. So the city is spending 1.5 million out of that account, savings account, in order to get to 25% minimum carryover, taken out of our savings account. And this isn't new. We've been taking funds out of our savings account for a couple of years now because there are such huge needs that are, that need to be met. And we'll talk more about those things as we go on. And then finally, you know, as it relates to the 2024 budget, we're only adding one additional full-time equivalent person, and that is the fire department. Everything else stays the same. So when we talk about 1.5 million that we take from savings, where does it go? About 450,000 goes to the fire department. Because the levy that is there for fire is still not right-sized. It's improved, but it's not right-sized. The EMS levy is right-sized. We adjusted fire EMS when we sent that to the ballot a few years ago. It was approved, and we plugged the EMS shortfall. And that was substantially more than the 450,000 for fire. It was closer to a million. So we've made progress. That's good. But as those levies come up whenever they do, how many years from now? These are the kinds of things that we need to progress. 450,000 to the streets. And as a note, you can never have enough money for streets. If you had all the money there is, it would still not be enough for streets. Streets are something that is, you know, they're a money pit. You know, they're like Oak Island, and that show. You just keep wanting more and more money and then you hope to find that treasure at the end. But you can go a lot of years before you can do that. I don't even know how that show turned out if they actually did find that.
It's still going on.
Yes. But here's kind of what, you know, when we look at the monies that we spend on roads, we have to kind of break it down. We broke it down before, let's reiterate it again for this budget. But if we look at just the residential roads, you know, take out the alleys and take out the cul-de-sacs, take out the main thoroughfares, and you're left with approximately 55-plus, 55-ish residential road miles. How often should they be paid? So this is the idea about the funding formula for roads. So if you expect a road that I described to last 16 years, that's a long time on the road. It's not a long time for a cul-de-sac. That's why it's a cul-de-sac. A cul-de-sac for 25, 30, 40 years. I live in a cul-de-sac. It's good for 30 years. So those can last longer. But you know, if we take from Glennwood, we take at Chatham, take these other kinds of streets as an example, and you think it's going to last 16 years, then you need to be, you need to be paid three and a half miles a year to keep to that schedule. Three and a half miles a year to keep to that schedule. What if you think the roads are probably more realistically in that 10 to 12-year phase? About every 10 to 12 years. Let's just take 12 years. Every 12 years, if the road is resurfaced, then that's doing four and a half miles a year. Actually, we did one and a half. This next budget, we forecasted we'd do one. Costs are astronomical from four or five years ago. Just out, out the roof. We're anticipating again large increases. Now, you may be pleasantly surprised. We'll see how that is. But the illustration is that, you know, the levy, you know, doesn't bring in enough money to do one, one and a half. We're way behind schedule that much. And these have, over time, if you lose control of it, this also is a contributing factor to property valuations, resell in the market. You're going to go buy a home on the street that looks like something from a war-torn country, probably not. It makes a difference. So anyway, so these shortfalls of program revenues in other funds and emerging general fund will result in overspending current year revenues by one and a half million this year, again, despite the late end price. What needs could not be funded in 2024? So this is not everything, but it's kind of some of the bigger things. For our water system, we could not do the Monachal Booster Pump Station. We could not do the Willoway Water Line replacement. And we also need a clarifier route that the water treatment will postpone. And you might ask, what happens to things that get postponed? Gina will always tell you that she keeps a scorecard of all the things postponed so that when you do the budget this succeeding year, the first things that we look at are the things that were postponed from the year before. And we make decisions on, can we give it a budget? If not, do we really need it? Can we just kill it entirely, or do we need to postpone it again? So. In the fire EMS world, we're looking at, we had to land the replacement of the 2007 Pierce ladder truck. Incidentally, it takes about three years to build a ladder truck today. It didn't in 2007, but it does now. And because it takes three years, it's like three times as much. I was on council in 2007 when we bought the Pierce ladder truck. It was a million dollars, and now we're looking at like 2.4 million if you weren't today, act now. We can't afford to. And two additional fire prevention vehicles we had to postpone. From the street department, salt dump trucks, they do wear out. Salt is very corrosive. So we'd like to have added another one. And then at our service garage, we need a sanitary sewer drain connection. Whenever we use a street sweeper and those things have to be cleaned out, we take it out to Canton because they have the facility that we can do it on. We don't have that here. Again, there are some things that we could do that would save us money in the long run, like you did with the street paving, the curb paving is saving us money. Parks, price park playground equipment is at 20 years old. And that is generally the time we look to replace those things. They're good this year, but we think that probably next year, certainly the year after, this would be a high priority to have that replaced. Civic Center needs some work in the parking lot. Needs work on the event hall flooring. And then there are issues with the windows. Being able to at least provide some sort of efficient insulation to that or even be able to open a window. Dog park, Glennwood pickleball courts, asphalt, ball field, parking lot, Dogwood Shelter inside renovation. The shelter is built in the 60s, the original park that's parallel to Seventh Street. Park that's perpendicular to Seventh, see the fact that was added in the 80s for the bathrooms are of the original building. It's largely just the same as it was since the 1960s. And Dogwood Pool renovations. We have been, as an aside, we have been in touch with the Dogwood Pool with the company predecessor of the 21 liner repairs done last year. Twenty of them have failed. So we started to begin early with them. We have received communication back from them. We have been scheduled, as it stands now, to come in here towards the end of October and early November to start the repairs and see how many they can get done. Hopefully, the weather's decent. That's the earliest they could come. I signed the authorization to give them here. And hopefully, if it's not done, they'll be back in the spring to complete that so that we can open up on time next year, just to give you a quick aside update. So the 2024 budget, we talked about things we couldn't do. Let's talk about the things that we can do. So we look at first at our water system. This is an enterprise fund. We're not talking Star Trek. We're just talking, these are funds that have to be set aside special. It can only be used for the water system. And on the left, you can kind of see what the revenues are. About 71% of the revenues come from sales and usage fees, and the other 29% is grants. And as we go through these slides, you're going to see a lot of our sources of revenue come from grants. And you need to keep in mind, grants are extremely competitive. And fortunately, we have a Crackerjack staff, led by our engineer that helps us be successful. And to our credit, his predecessor also was Crackerjack at that measure. But there are other ones out there now in other communities who are also honing their skills. And it's getting harder to get dollars. In addition, the grant sources aren't constant either. So not every year are the same dollar amounts available for grants, which just makes the pool shallower to get in, and that affects our ability to get money. So what do we need? We need more customers in our water fund. With more customers, a lot more customers, we can do more projects. That gets us to the other pie chart. It talks about our expenses. And if you look at it, in a sense, 21% of the orange pie is for personnel costs. That's what our costs are regardless of whether or not we're doing anything with the auto treatment plan or putting customers in. Those are kind of our fixed overhead is in personnel. But the things that the personnel need to do their job, the equipment, the supplies, the materials, that's under operating. And the green is the capital investment. That's the actual projects. And then sometimes we don't have enough money to do the projects. We borrow, and that's the debt. But 79% of every dollar of revenue goes to actually a project. So what are we doing in 2024? We're going to do the Ninth Street Northeast lever water line and reconstruction. Approximate cost on that is 900,000. If we cross the top, we're going to do the Woodrow Lois Water Line. That is a 1.3 million dollar project. We're going to do, we are budgeting to do the Orient Street Water Line. This is a joint project with Plain Township, as you know. Last year, they applied for that. It didn't make the funding cuts. Not quite sure where it's going to be when we get scored this year. But we believe that it's a good project for our water line to be able to loop the system. And if they're going to tear up the road, then we can help in that respect and then get a grant. It's all the better for us. And then finally, the Arrowhead Raw Water Well is 2.250 million. And as you know, we have applied to the federal government through Congress versus Sykes Office for a $500,000 grant. It's hard to say with all these continuing resolutions that have to go yet and the budget process in Washington, whether that'll make it through. But it did make it out of committee, did make it into the markup. That's at least a positive development. And then we've also applied for funds to the Ohio Public Works Commission for a combination loan and grant. Okay, sanitary sewer system is also an enterprise class fund. And there are no grants that we get there, so it's 100% off the sales and usage fees. And how that is distributed, we do not operate a sanitary sewer plant. All of our stuff. All of our stuff goes to Canton or Stark County. They operate lines that take it to Canton. So the Stark County doesn't process it either. They ship all their stuff to Canton. So Canton's got a lot of stuff that they have to deal with. And we have, our agreement is we do the lines. We will maintain the sanitary lines. We think that we can do them better, more efficiently, effectively, more cost conscious than, uh, turning it over to the city of Canton to do where they have so much territory to cover and so few resources that perhaps they, ours wouldn't get the attention that they deserve. So you can see the pie chart there that quickly twenty-four percent, uh, of that budget is in personnel. The rest, seventy-six percent goes to making sure the stuff flows. What sanitary sewer project are we doing next year? We're gonna do the Wilbur Northeast Sewer Line Project. We have a, uh, sewer liner runs up there around where that creek starts up on, uh, Wilbur. It flows at this way across Applebrook. And we have a sewer line up there. And we believe that that sewer line is in, um, uh, a state of that water from the creek made it into it. And of course, the fees that we pay to Canton for our stuff is based on volume. So the more water we can keep out of those pipes, the less stuff we're sending, the less cost it is to us. So it's important that when you find a line that looks like there could be infiltration, you wanna replace it. So we're using this concept of a lining where we don't put in a whole new pipe. We just put in a sleeve, if you will. It's usually made out of some type of, uh, plastic material that you sleeve it all the way through. And it keeps the water out, but it keeps the stuff in it and moves it along. Okay, streets and roads. So when we look at this, um, I mean, this, these are again from the big picture kind of point of view. When we look at that pie chart on the left, we talk about revenue. I'd like to, I'd like you to understand this revenue stream. As I see it, you know, sitting in, in my capacity and for you, as you're thinking about where are we five years, ten years, twenty years down the road with things? Well, this comes to mind. So right now, the gas tax provides thirty-seven percent of our revenues. Well, what happens with EVs? They don't use a lot of gas. They don't use any gas. And if it's an EV, a gas hybrid, they use even less gas too. So if gas sales are down as time goes on, then the revenue from the gas tax is likely to move down. And we have to think about how that fits into our budget then. If it's the view out of Washington, trying to accelerate this EV adoption, uh, in the next ten years, we may start to see the impact of this sooner rather than later. Are the folks in Columbus gonna find a different way to give us that money back? I haven't doubted. They haven't had a great track record of taking away our monies and then finding a way to bring it back. So, uh, some say that, uh, that it's possible that they may raise the registration fee for the motor vehicle. And that's how they'll replace the gas tax. They'll hit the electric vehicle on the registration and pass that on. Maybe, we'll see. Uh, income tax, about eight percent of our streetwear revenues comes from capital investment, uh, from the income tax fund. Grants, we get fifteen percent. Keep in mind what I said before about competitiveness in the shallow pool. And then we'll, general fund transfers, we're transferring seventeen percent of those revenues into this department to do these roads. And then that leaves the street levy, which is about eighteen percent. All of this is giving us a mile, mile and a half. So we have to, we have to do better. So that, that street levy, when that time comes, we have to have a discussion about it and what it means. Now, on the other side of the graph, chart, we look at the, how the money is spent. And again, it's, you know, fairly consistent. About twenty-four percent of every dollar goes towards personnel and the rest goes into fixing the street. So it can be operating supplies. We'll probably see our operating supplies continue to grow. So like we do the asphalt paving machine. Asphalt, the operating supply, right? We have to divide the asphalt. Or if we're doing the curb machine with cement, we have to buy cement. So those are operating supplies. We would kind of like to see that those couple items grow because that means that we're doing more in-house and we're not, uh, outsourcing it to private, uh, contractors that may charge a lot more for smaller projects. And then you can see debt. Debt is for equipment in this particular case. So we bought those machines, paying them off over a couple of years and eventually hoping them not to go away. What capital projects are we doing in twenty twenty-four in the streets? Well, our residential paving program, we're gonna have about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars there. That'll be about one mile, based on the engineer's estimate at this time. Who knows what it'll be three, four months from now? We could be in a recession, who knows? And, uh, prices could come down because people are looking for work and they sharpen their pencils. We'll see. So far, that hasn't proven to be the case. We need a skid steamer with attachments. That's about a hundred and thirty-five thousand. Uh, we are looking to do these, uh, wood, the remainder of the Woodrow sidewalks, uh, in design for the street scaping there. That's fifty-five thousand. And this will wind up with a project that is in your twenty twenty-five budget that Rob applied for, got grants to do Woodrow from Pierce to Pittsburgh. And that will be, I think it's Pierce, but whatever it's, it's kind of, I always get those streets where it's Bruceford, Pierce kind of intersect Woodrow. But generally, from that vicinity to Pittsburgh with new sidewalks, curb and gutter, new road, you know, the whole way. So this is dealing with from that area east to Main Street. We did phase one on the north side of the street. Dealt with all the sidewalks, removed the trees from the Devil Strip. Then we're breaking up the sidewalk, breaking through the road, plugging the drains. Our intent is, Bryce is, is working with us on a design that we, you know, get together with, uh, the folks in that neighborhood, council person, and talk about, here's a vision for what we anticipate this street to look like with replacing the drains and restoring that corridor to what it once was many years ago before I was born. More likely, you know, when Carol was, you know, a young, a youngin'. And then we're gonna replace one pickup truck. Now, sometimes the pictures of these objects are not exactly, dude, that looks like a dump truck. Sure. So we're not buying the dump truck. It is a pickup. Fire protection and prevention. So we look on the left side. Now, let's just, you know, let's start on the right side, okay? Personnel, sixty-nine percent. Now, you'll note, that's a way different percentage than what we saw in the other departments where we were running about twenty-four percent of our expenditures. But this is one of those unique departments where you want majority of your expenditures to be personnel. That means that you actually have people who are gonna show up in the ambulance or in the fire truck, in this case, the fire truck, and actually help you. So that is not unusual. You want a low investment in capital equipment. I don't want an ambulance for every single employee there, right? They ride two or three together. So we wanna kind of just have enough capital investment to get this out done. And you can see how very little goes towards operating expenses. On the revenue side though, we look at the green section, the fire levies, sixty-three percent. Just looking at that, that's sixty-three percent of less than the cost for the personnel, sixty-five percent. You throw in the general fund transfers, now we're looking at about, you know, eighty-six percent of the revenues, um, to make that pie work, means that we're, you can't do it without the general fund transfer. And there's the previous slide that was happening. So when the time comes, we have to talk about that levy when it renews and what we're looking to do there. That's a few years out, but for the meantime, that's what we're gonna be. One area that we'll talk in the future about is transitioning to a full-time fire department. So we'll be much more to come on that later. But we do believe that, you know, when we look at the personnel cost here, most of this comes from part-time people. And it results in a lot of overtime because we rely on part-time people. We do about three hundred thousand a year in overtime. And if we're short five hundred, you can see the three hundred is a big piece of that. And how we get away from that is by moving towards a full-time department. And we think that we can largely offset it. Fire capital projects, uh, our fire department is, is thinking outside the box for us and looking at the latest and greatest new technologies. And there are, um, what we call a dual-purpose engine to do, you know, more than one thing. So it actually replaces two of the old vehicles. Rather than replace each of those old vehicles, we can combine it together and save some money. And we're gonna finance that over ten years. We're gonna replace one support vehicle for sixty thousand and we're gonna get a mobile command post for thirty thousand. The mobile command post is important as we're dealing with fires and integrating services between police department, fire department, street department. There's no, you know, we need a place to set up and be able to communicate with all the departments. Their instructions on dealing with this calamity whenever it is instructed between emergency medical services. We're almost to the end post. I know you're excited. Emergency medical services, so EMS, uh, EMS levy, seventy percent of our revenues from that. And then our billing service for EMS, soft bill that we do, is every twenty-four percent of revenues. That ninety-four percent covers the eighty-two percent cost of personnel. So this is where we say, you know, that one is right size, that is working for us. And only nine percent is for operating. Again, same thing with fire. We wanna be people heavy here because we wanna make sure that when you call, we have somebody trained, that's professional, that can help you, uh, get through your crisis. EMS capital projects, replacing one ambulance. This will also be financed over three years, this is four hundred and fifty thousand. And, you know, when you refinance, when you finance things, it costs money. There's debt, right? There's interest rates today. Rates today are higher than they were a few years ago. Probably gonna be higher for a longer time. That means more money out of our budget devoted to debt servicing. And so it would be nice to pay cash. It'd be nice to be in a position to pay cash. And how you get that is by getting that target fund carryover balance, that savings account balance back up. So that you're able to deal with some of those things. And we're gonna replace an event, a medical, medic vehicle for a thirty-two thousand. But equipment costs continue to escalate, particularly in this specialized equipment. You know, I can remember just, you know, a few years ago, one of my first ambulances that we bought was three hundred thousand. Now it's four hundred thousand. Five years from now, we don't know what it'll be, but we have to be thinking about those things. And then next is everything else. This is, you know, you may remember the, you know, commercials. This is the ragu portion of the, uh, remember Ragù and the Mama House? Plus everything's in there. So that's where this is. Everything else. And you can see, uh, the important part on the left that I wanna talk about is that seventy-four, in the blue area, seventy-four percent of our revenue comes from income tax. Ninety percent in green for property tax, the inside goes eighty percent. That property tax, those are those levies. We have a fire EMS, fire levy and EMS levy, storm levy and a road levy. That's it. Those are the four levies. And that's what your property taxes are paid for, for those levies. And we've already talked about how those levies don't generate sufficient funds for what they need to do. And as it relates to our budget, it's not the gorilla in the game. And it's, you know, permit fees, we get some, we get interest. You know, does a great job of earning interest on our balances, uh, some rental income miscellaneous stuff. And we go over to the expense side. Although the pie chart is broken down into many rainbow colors, we're gonna kind of, I'm gonna kind of group for this discussion that the police department, dispatch department, and the school resource officers components total thirty-six percent of the everything else money. I'm not complaining. We need the police. We need those controls. This is what makes us a safe community that we are today. And why we repeatedly rank over the years high in all kinds of different opinion polls as to North Canton has a great place to live, work, raise a family. Uh, and then you see the other pie chart there where we're at. It's amazing that we do as much in-market rep, just that twelve percent, uh, and the general government, nineteen percent. Let's see the rest. General fund, twenty twenty-four capital projects, lease, dispatch. We're gonna get two leased cruisers, uh, one hundred and forty-five thousand. And a new dispatch and radio console, upgrading that IT that we need to make sure that our dispatch stays current. And that is about three hundred and twenty thousand financed over five years. And generally, as a rule for you guys, what we, what we like to do, that Jeanne and I talk about is that like we did that, for instance, as an example, in the street department, they wanted to get something else that was a big ticket item. They said, no. We believe that we need to pay off the other big ticket items before we buy the next big ticket item. So I don't wanna double up. Uh, we have another year to go on that, uh, street paving issue, so we're gonna postpone some of those bigger purchases. In the parks and recreation, we have Dogwood Shelters. Roof is in serious need of attention. Uh, we have a community athletic field project that we're moving forward and a Dogwood Park shade structure. In the general government, um, the city hall's HVAC system, uh, is beyond, uh, tinkering that most of the time, does it cool or does it heat? There's an unbearable situation for, uh, police and administration, probably more social administration. Frank keeps his people pretty cool. Temperature's a little low. But as any, if you, if you were to see the computer that runs this thing, remember the movie E.T.? When the computer and the little green thing comes up, it's a little DOS prompt comes up. That is, they don't have the DOS system, but the DOS prompt, right? That's, that, it's there, we have it. You know, E.T. computer monitor and it's DOS prompt. It, it can't keep up with the system. So that needs to replace, be replaced as a twelve thousand financed over ten years. And then, uh, the facilities, parks, master plan, architectural designing, uh, so like internally, we're going to do the master plan for the facility. But then, as things come out of those, that master plan that need to be done, we know that we're gonna have to engage architecture firms, group tech firms to kind of come up with what it's gonna look like, how much it's gonna cost, et cetera. So in conclusion, I think that we have fulfilled our mission of giving you a budget for the city second century. Again, focused on fiscal responsibility, paying attention to our capacity, our efficiency, our effectiveness with the tax dollars. With that, I offer my thanks to the chairperson of the committee for allowing you to use a lot of the time.
Well, you.
I'm sure there'll be questions as we move forward in the least ahead. And I'm sure, uh, every department head will be here at some point during October to Every department head will be here at some point during October to answer your questions either during the meeting or after meeting or before the meeting. So we wanted to let you know that.
Any other questions, concerns, any more comments? Gina, any comments?
Well, I just, I do want to add that this is the budget as we know it. And at 3:15 tomorrow, something would come in and may change something. And we want it to be the most updated information that we have. So should those things change, such as when the county commissioners certified the levies and the millage and the amount of money that's going to bring in, when we bring the tax budget back to you to accept the amounts and rates as established by the county budget commission, if those numbers are different than what we're forecasting, we would want to true those up. We would want to make sure that they're right. So if there's substantial changes, we're going to propose the amendments, you know, all the way through the three readings until we know we're spot on.
Excellent job.
Yeah. And I think, I mean, just so you know, the time and effort, not meeting with us, but being with each of those departments and everybody wants something different. And there's always a why they need it or why they are more needed than another department. And, you know, you saw there were a lot of things that weren't able to be funded this year. And that's okay. I don't think we fund everything in our own household. So it's really a very mature act that we take within our own homes and then, I think, here even more so. So I just appreciate the thoroughness that went into that and then taking the time to meet with all of us individually. So this is not your first or last or middle time. You're going to keep seeing this throughout this month. And then we do have different timetables that we need to meet to make sure this goes into effect for 2024. Any questions, concerns right now? Yeah?
Just a comment. I've sat through, Mr. Duroy, of course, has made fun of my age and he'll be talking my federal return. But I've sat through a lot of budgets, probably what, Ben, maybe 30 of them or so over the course of my career. And I think it was touched upon earlier in the comments, Stephanie, that you made. But I think it's important for those in our audience to understand that of the 30 budgets that I've participated in, this is probably the best process because it ties policy to budgeting in a clear explanation. We're not submerged in the weeds, talking about cell phone bills or something else. We have a fairly clear understanding of where the money comes from, where it goes, and what's needed to advance the city. We haven't done that, I don't think we've done it well in the past. Yeah, but this is really sort of the apex right now. And I think that's, that's really good. So people who are trying to figure out where this community is going can really look at the budget documents and figure it out. It's not complicated. Because we've had excellent explanation. I used to work for a company that built digital maps and its motto was seen as understanding. And you can see it here. So Patrick, Gina, Ben, thank you for a great job. I'm sure that we'll probably get some comments as this unfolds. But this really is, really is a great linkage between income, revenue, and policy.
Well, and they're there to, cell phones might become an issue, right? Who knows? One department might be going crazy or, who even knows? But they're there to catch that and they're there to look and say, well, why did it go up 500% this year? What's going on? But they see that.
It's their job.
Exactly.
They are the managers.
Yeah.
I think that a lot of work went into this. The presentation is, is good. The information was very informative. And Gina and your team put hours and hours into this. I think it also states that the development that's taking place up at Meyer, the jobs that are coming, those are important as we look at what our second or third year of taking money out of that savings to cover the needs, that we do need to have these jobs in place to help supplement this budget to get us back to where we need to be. And that's evident. The work that they're doing with Jackson Township, thank you for putting that together. I think that's going to add more income to help us get to where we need to be.
David, you touched on something that I meant to, meant to just mention. But that $1.5 million that we're transferring is worth 2,000 jobs at $750, $750 a year income tax. That's a $50,000 job, 2,000. So that's the, you know, people say, well, why are you doing this? Because we, we absolutely have to have taxable employment in this city. And if you're going to close these gaps, we've got to have jobs. And like I said, you know, most communities, my experience, you know, if they got 100 or 200 jobs in a year, they were happy. That's what makes Meyer so spectacular. But 2,000, 2,000 jobs in a year is a big, big lift to get there, to close $1.5 million. We're working it.
Stephanie, I'd just like to add too, again, thank you for, because we are on schedule for this presentation and the introduction tonight. Thank you very much for the team over here and everybody that worked on it. I, I still like the, the three-legged stool here about capacity, efficiency, and effectiveness. I think what corresponds to that is also what has taken place, not only this year, but in the past years, was planning, controlling, and evaluating performance. And these are other key components of putting a budget together and creating financial stability for our community, but also positioning us for the future. They not only look at day-to-day, but we're also looking at long-term and where are we going to be? And this is just the beginning of our process here to finally, you know, come to a conclusion with the budget. But thank you for the introduction and getting us started on, on going forward with our 2024 budget.
Or briefly, can you go over the timeline, just for the public, of when you guys started to meet and incorporating the department heads? Because I think it's important for the public to know the deep dive that you guys took onto this.
When we start preparing the tax budget, as soon as we close the month of July, we have seven full months to work with and the tax budget is due by August 15th. So that is our first round of the tax budget. And it's every day until right now.
That is impressive. I, I think that the public doesn't realize the intense amount of work that you've all put into this.
It is. And, you know, and I really, we really enjoy working with Gina. I think she's a master at her craft and.
And Jim. Jim's up Jacob.
That's a big lift. But I can tell you that, you know, as we did this and we, you know, I met with the department heads first and then we met together and we do this, we go through it and we get closer and we keep coming back and we say, okay, well, we're this far off yet, we need to go back. And I can, you know, remember in one of the last ones before we got it balanced was that you're making those phone calls right out of the room. Hey, superintendent, this is where we're at. I gotta tell you, I gotta cut. You gotta cut more? And this is what I'm telling you that I'm cutting. And we went through it and we got it done. But then it's this constant, then what Gina says, her work's not done. As these numbers get changed from the other agencies that are sending us money, those have to be updated and we may have to go back and do more.
If the grants are approved with Rob's projects, if they're not approved, we're going to reallocate what we have our share in there for to do something different. We'll keep you updated with those as they come in.
Great work. Jane, you wanted me to pass these out to the police for kids for saving the budget.
That's almost not fair to the whole audience.
Got more.
All right. So there's no other concerns or issues at this moment. I have a motion in second to move the item 3A to the council agenda.
Revolt moves, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. We will move it to the council agenda next week. So item 3B, a resolution to acknowledge the rates and fees utilized to establish the budget. So just looking at those numbers, that he talked about, for instance, moving the fees with zoning and planning. So we've talked about those in the past couple of weeks. And this is a, just establish that budget and make sure those numbers are up there. Any questions or concerns on that?
No, makes sense.
All right. A motion in second to move item 3B to the council agenda next week.
Revolt moves.
All in favor?
Go me in second.
Oh, second, sorry.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we will move that to the council agenda as well. And then lastly, 3C is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter a contract for professional auction services for sale of vehicles, which we do every single year and we hope to make a little bit of money and allows us to buy the new buildings and vehicles that we need. Any questions or concerns on that?
Couple of items other than just vehicles on the list.
Get other things, you're saying?
There are a couple of other things other than vehicles on the list.
You're right. Get them out of here. All right. So I need a motion in second. I'll make the motion to move that item 3C to the council agenda. Is there a second?
Revolt seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That will move to the council agenda next week.
I will make a motion to adjourn. Revolt moves.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we're adjourned.
Wow. Amazing.